Good evening and welcome to our February 12th regular school board meeting. At this time, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Welcome, everyone. So before we get started, we actually have a little something special we get to do, which normally we get to do in January school board meetings. But one of our newly elected school board members was out of town in January, so we get to swear him in tonight. So we do have a quorum of school board members tonight. So at this time, I would like to invite our vice chair Sachin Isaacs to stand, and we will recite his oath of office. So Sachin, if you could just raise your right hand for me and just repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Sachin Isaacs.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the office of the school board for independent school district 196.
To the office of the school board of independent district 196.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And discharge faithfully.
And discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office of school board.
The duties of the office of school board.
Member to the best of my judgment and ability.
Member to the best of my judgment and ability.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right, now you are official official. All right. At this time, I would ask that we approve the agenda for tonight. We are working off of a revised agenda. Several of our special communication request speakers have withdrew their requests. So that's the only revision to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the revised agenda as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sachin, second by Jackie. All those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a five zero vote. Now we get to move into our favorite part of the school board meeting is our recognition section. So at this time, I would like to welcome our gifted and talented development teacher Teresa back to the podium to introduce us to the regional future city competition second place finishers.
Good evening, school board members, chairperson Johnson, and superintendent Krieger. My name is Teresa Bach, and it is my pleasure to present to you the Scott Highlands Middle School Future City team who took second place at this year's Minnesota Region's Future City Competition. The Future City Competition is a national program for middle school students sponsored by Discover Engineering. This year, ISD 196 was well represented. Teams from Blackhawk Middle School, Rosemount Middle School, Valley Middle School of STEM, and Scott Highlands competed in the competition, and most of those teams took home awards. All Future City teams begin their season in September and work together until the third week of January to imagine, research, design, and build a city set at least 100 years into the future. This year's theme challenged teams to design a futuristic and innovative city that was powered entirely by electricity. Success in programs like Future City requires a whole host of support for their teams. I'd like to thank several groups of people who all contributed to the success of our teams. First off, Future City is sponsored by our administration at Scott Highlands Middle School. Without their support, we would not even be able to have competitions like Future City. Thank you to our principal, Mr. Will Harbor, who is here this evening, for his constant support of all of our competition teams. Number two, Future Cities is organized by Spark Path, a local nonprofit organization that partners with schools and communities to offer educational opportunities like Future City for a whole host of age categories and all sorts of enrichments. We thank them. Third, Future Cities connects students to professional engineers, and Scott Highlands is fortunate to have a professional engineer, Christina Presler, work with our team to share her professional experience and guidance in air quality control and environmental engineering. She is an employee of Mergent Incorporated, and we thank her and her employer for the time that she devotes to our competition each week. Number four, Future Cities could not continue without the support of all of these students' families. A heartfelt thank you to the families who are with us tonight and those that could not make it. Our parents transport their kids to practices. They arrange and rearrange family schedules, supervise, host, and guide our children during their entire project. At this time, I'd like to recognize the families of our students who participated in the Future City program. Please rise, families. Thank you very much. And of course, the fifth group I need to thank are the students that are here and the ones who are not here this evening. All of the students that enter in the Future City Competition put forth their whole heart and soul into a four-month competition. And so it is grueling, and their accomplishments, I'm so thankful that you honored us tonight to be here, to celebrate with them. And we just thank all of you for the support that you have provided for our students. At this time, I'd like to recognize our students that are here this evening. Lorenzo Galindes, Rishik Kandadadi, Haran Parathapan, Kirishna Ruttenaville, Eli Terry, Manaswini Dhaka, Evan Thompson. Thank you, board members, for your constant support of all of our students.
Great job. Congratulations. Awesome job. Great job. Awesome job. Congratulations. Thanks for being here. Awesome job. You're welcome. Great job. Great job. Fantastic job. You're very welcome. All right. As we're getting that group photo arranged, I would like to welcome NSDA Board President and Eagan High School Speech Debate Coach Chris McDonald to the podium to introduce us to our state debate tournament third place finisher.
Good evening. And I know Superintendent Krieger, you were thinking, you are going to get to retire and not have me stand at this podium again. But here we are, and you get to see me twice tonight. I just know, Mary, you were just like, yes, this is great. All right. A huge thank you to Superintendent Mary Krieger, as well as Board President Corey Johnson for inviting us this evening to once again celebrate the accomplishments of students in our district. First, I'll start with, I'm not the NSDA president. That's Pam Katie Wykoff. It just keeps getting... I know that we look a lot alike, but we don't look that much alike. Okay. Tonight, we are here to honor Jacob Braginsky for his accomplishments this season at the state debate tournament, as well as his accomplishments throughout four years of high school at Eagan High School as a member of not only our debate team, but our speech team. Jacob is one of our team captains. Jacob was recently named an Academic All-American by the National Speech and Debate Association, an honor that is only earned by 3% of all seniors nationwide. This year, Jacob won the championship at the prestigious Minneapolis Debate Tournament in November. Finally, through his hard work and effort, Jacob finished third at this year's Minnesota State High School League State Debate Tournament. The state debate tournament is the oldest and longest-running state championship in Minnesota, this year celebrating its 123rd year. Jacob also was qualified for the national tournament, and this summer will be joining me in glamorous Des Moines, Iowa for the national tournament in debate. So I'd like the board and the audience to join me in congratulating Jacob Braginsky on his accomplishment.
Amazing. All right. At this time, I will turn it over to Superintendent Krieger for superintendent's recognition of students and staff.
Okay, thank you. We have several recognitions tonight. So we'll start off with congratulations to junior Lila Bartels of Eagan High School. I'm being selected a 2024 Excellence in Community Education and Leadership Award recipient for Region 3 AA. The Excel Awards recognize high school juniors who are active in fine arts and athletic activities who demonstrate leadership qualities and who are models, citizens in their community. Each high school in the state can nominate one junior boy and girl for the Excel Awards. Two recipients are selected from each of the eight competitive regions in the state for both Class A and AA schools. The other Excel Award nominees from District 196 are Delina Tizazu and Gerald Namabe of Apple Valley High School, Param Thacker of Eagan High School, Hemaney Mandal and Max Huberty of Eastview High School, and Nea Chetty and Andrew Tennyson of Rosemont High School. Similarly, I would like to congratulate the eight District 196 seniors who were nominated for Academics Arts and Athletics Award for the 2324 school year. The AAA goes to nominated seniors with a 3.0 or higher grade point average who participate in athletic and fine arts programs and exhibit exemplary citizenship and the highest standards of sportsmanship and conduct. Each high school in the state can nominate one senior boy and girl for the award. Section and state AAA award recipients will be selected this spring from the list of nominees. The AAA award nominees from District 196 are Grace Alagbo and Dominique Bauer of Apple Valley High School, Kira Waldrop and Jack Kruger of Eagan High School, Emily Herring and Connor Berry of Eastview High School, and Alexa Erzard and Andrew Schultz of Rosemont High School. And there's more. Congratulations, Param Thacker and Tristan Noon of Eagan High School on making it to the semifinals in policy debate in the state debate tournament in January. Congratulations to the Ford Leaf team from Valley Middle School of STEM on finishing in fourth place and winning the special award for best visualization of a smart, sustainable city at the Regional Future City Competition in January. Congratulations and good luck to the District 196 students who qualified for the state Alpine and Nordic Ski tournaments that will be held this week, starting tomorrow, in Bowabik. We have boys' and girls' team and individual qualifiers in both events. Congratulations and good luck to the Eastview High School Lightning Dance team in the state tournament later this week. And congratulations and good luck to members of the Unified Team from Eagan High School who will be competing in the Unified State Tournament at Target Center this Thursday morning. And finally, I want to recognize and thank members of our school board for their hard work and commitment to students, families, and staff of District 196. February is school board appreciation month in Minnesota. Earlier this month, the board appointed Leah Gardner to fill a vacancy. She will join the board at the next regular meeting on March 11th. The six seated members of our school board have a combined 64 years of service. Chairperson Corey Johnson, four years. Vice Chairperson Sachin Isaacs, seven years. Treasurer Sirkaoudin Mohammed, two years. Clerk Anna Williams just joined the board this month, or last month. Director Art Colson, 16 years. And Director Jackie Magnuson, 35 years. Thank you to all of our school board members.
Thank you very much. Next, we will move into our special communications request. We have one member signed up for special communication requests. I'm Aaron Thompson. Is Aaron here? Okay, then we will move past special communication requests into our consent agenda. School board members, we have 23 items on our consent agenda today. Those items include minutes of the January 8th, 2024, regular school board meeting; minutes of the January 22nd, 2024, special school board meeting; minutes of January 30th, 2024, special school board meeting; minutes of January 30th, 2024, special school board meeting; minutes of February 5th, 2024, special school board meeting; gifts, grads, advertising revenue, treasurer's report for December 2023; summary of claims for December 2023; schedule of investments for December 2023; revenues of expenditures report for December 2023; elementary number 20, bid package 1R, mechanical and electrical equipment; bids for network firewall services, purchase of student iPads; iPad laptop sale, RFB, 2024-25, Apple Valley High School roof rehabilitation personnel; agreement for clinical experience, St. Catherine University; agreement for clinical experience, University of Minnesota; resolution to dissolve girls' lacrosse co-op between Apple Valley and Burnsville High Schools; resolution pursuant to Minnesota statute 354.66; qualifying part-time teachers; and memorandum of understanding with the City of Eagan for ETV studio space. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members would like to pull today? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Sachin, seconded by Art. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a five zero vote. We have no items of old business today, and for new business, we have our proposed changes for the 2024-25 school board calendar. And I would like to welcome Director of Teacher and Learning Steve Trone and Director of Elementary Education Jeremy Sorensen to the podium.
Okay, good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, Superintendent Krieger. I'm here this evening to outline proposed changes to the 24-25 school year calendar and related rationale and background. The existing 2024-25 school year calendar was approved by the board in June 2023 as part of a normal established process of approving calendars every two years in the district to aid in planning for both school staff and families. The calendar approved last June included 169 student contact days for elementary, plus the two connection assessment days that we have. And at the secondary level, 171 student contact days for middle school and high school. The calendar also included, at that time, kindergarten transition days, which was a practice that was established after the pandemic to aid in that transition to school, utilizing some federal COVID relief funds. That calendar included those student contact days, which were well above the required student minimum instructional hours required by the state of Minnesota. Since that time, all districts across the state have been closely aligning and following changes made at the legislative level. The 2023 Minnesota Legislative Session included the passage of the Reading to Ensure Academic Development Act, or READ Act. The READ Act focuses on a shift from balanced literacy to structured literacy for all districts across the state of Minnesota. It includes several elements, including a new literacy screener. In our district, we transitioned to a new literacy screener last summer, Fastbridge; a new literacy curriculum. In our district, we're in the middle of a process right now of going through and selecting the approved curriculum in line with the state requirements; literacy intervention; and, most notably, 45 hours of required literacy training for all pre-K through 12 teachers who teach literacy. In our district, that involves more than 1,300 students, excuse me, 1,300 teachers over the next two years, and all new teachers on an ongoing basis. The required training approved by the state of Minnesota must be spread out throughout the school year, and again, 1,300 teachers going through that 45 hours of training. Along with that state requirement, District 196 is also in the middle of a new elementary math curriculum adoption process and implementation over the next two years, and a new science curriculum implementation at the same time in line with state standards. On top of that, I would add that I think there's a constant tension, if you will, for around time, finding enough time for quality professional development in our current calendar amidst growing training needs centered on school safety, anti-bias training, and curriculum alignment. So that challenge brought us to December of 2023 and the formation of a PD calendar task force made up of 35 members, including parents, students, teachers, and other staff. That task force looked at input from stakeholders, considered a variety of creative ideas, including late starts and early releases, and flexible e-learning days and full days, all trying to find where are we going to find that 45 hours of additional time for those 1,300 teachers. At the end of that process, recommendations were forwarded to Super Ten's cabinet. And the Super Ten, along with cabinet, sought additional feedback at that time from parent and teacher leader groups, principals, and employee bargaining groups in the month of January. Along the way, effort was made to keep the school board up to date via the weekly board newsletter. So I'm here this evening to present the recommendations at the end of that process centered on providing that time for that quality professional development. Two changes are being recommended to the existing calendar that was earlier approved for 2024-25. First of all, recommendation to convert three student contact days to professional development days for next fall, winter, and spring. The three days will be spread out throughout the year, one day in each trimester. An intentional effort was made to align those three days next to existing calendar breaks to limit the disruption to families and other stakeholders. That change, combined with existing professional development time, would enable us to provide the time for that required professional development training centered on literacy, and provide teachers and other employee groups time to complete other training: school safety, anti-bias, new curriculum alignment, and training for non-teaching bargaining groups as well, such as transportation and other groups. The second change being recommended goes back to that earlier statement I made about post-pandemic and kindergarten transition days. That practice was established as we came out of the pandemic disruption using federal COVID relief funds for transportation and time for staff. Kindergarten students had two half-days before the start of the school year. After review of that process and with the COVID relief funding going away, a decision was made to utilize our existing elementary assessment days to provide that individualized transition time for kindergarten students. And by doing that, enabling consistent first day of school start for all grade levels, kindergarten through grade five. So I'm here tonight, with this being under new business, with plans to come to a future board meeting under old business, but happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you very much. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Yes. If you want to come up to the podium and ask your question. So while you're coming up to ask your question, for all new business, old business, and action items from the board, we love hearing questions or comments from the public. We allow up to 10 speakers, two minutes to ask their questions. So you'll see a little timer on the podium, just in case you have it. But I will just introduce yourself, and then you can proceed with your question or comment. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kat Briggs. I'm a bus driver and a lead unit steward with the Transportation Department. I'd like to extend congratulations to our board members. I've come here to address this proposed additional days off. While we support the teachers' ongoing educational needs and understand the necessity of additional learning schedules needed to implement the new curriculum as required by the 2023 Minnesota Legislature, we do not support the need for additional unpaid days off as proposed. The 24-25 calendar currently has six instructional alignment and staff development days assigned, all of which are unpaid for support staff in this district. The proposed additional days also come on the heels of days that are already scheduled as non-paid days off, or as support staff and administrators refer to them as non-student contact days. For example, your proposed November 11th comes on the heels of November 7th and 8th, which are existing calendar break days, both of which are days off for the majority of workers in the Transportation Department. As such, for the 24-25 school year, many of those essential workers will only receive five full paychecks throughout the entire school year. You have proposed that you will eliminate kindergarten orientation. That will give you two of the proposed three days needed for teacher learning. You will also not, may not be aware, that the MEA convention is only one day. Yes, one day, not two, thereby giving you one more day, October 18th, as a third day of learning. This alone will give you three days needed to complete teacher learning. Another option is to eliminate the August 28th and 29th as back-to-school for 6 to 12, and assessment for K through 5, and start all students as before on September 3rd, again giving you additional days for teacher learning, and also making parents' lives easier as school will start when it should, after Labor Day. Additionally, combining K through 12 conferences for Thursdays and Fridays. That way, 8 through 12 teachers could get their educational needs met, and other services would not be stretched thin. Substituting classes which are useless to driver chaperones and crossing guards halfway through the school year is not a solution. We need pay for these days to keep us whole throughout the school year. These proposed additional days off without pay create undue financial burden on at least one, if not more, of your essential worker units. Please review this change to the 24-25 calendar further before making any final decisions. Thank you.
Superintendent Krieger, did you have any?
I'd like to address just part of what you had to share with us. Certainly, we understand those concerns about having employees not have pay that they're counting on. And so we also understand that so many of our employees' groups, they do not have time for the essential training that they need. Our transportation, our drivers, our custodians, our food service workers, they all have pretty high standards to meet for professional development within their units. And so right now, those three days are under consideration. And it's not an automatic, people won't be expected to work on those days. Rather, those days might be used to have that same time that we need more of for teachers. We also need for our other employee groups. So I don't have the specifics tonight, but just know it is a shared concern. It's something that we're working on to address, to make every minute meaningful for all of our employees. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Jackie?
I'd like to thank everybody who worked on this. It was 35 people on the committee. And I know that they reached out to, it's kind of like that commercial where they reached out to these people and these people. A lot of people had input on this calendar. Kat, thank you for bringing that up. That gives us another way to look at that. And as Superintendent Krieger has said, we have been talking about that, of how we can use those days so that you're not going unpaid, because we have a lot of need of things that we can do in service on. I still have, it's interesting that the state would command 45 hours of time in our teaching calendar, which is already packed and stretched. And they're going to, teachers are going to need 45 hours to have a better understanding and a better workability with our structured literacy, and if you're in elementary, and new math, and new science. And all of those need staff development as we move along. So I'm still concerned that this isn't enough, that we've got an awful lot on the backs of our elementary school teachers. So as we walk through, let's make sure that that's a mantra that we keep in our heads that we can look for any ways that we can help elementary school teachers get the structure that they need, get the training that they need to help impact our students' learning, but make sure that we're supporting them in all the ways that we can. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Just wanted to say thank you, because I know this wasn't, it's not, I don't think anyone wanted to be making a calendar change, but we have mandate from the state. We got to figure out the best way to do that. And again, there are a lot of concerns. Just one quick thing that popped up, or maybe a question I had, actually popped up right as you were reading the dates, is I noticed November 11th is Veterans Day. And a lot of our schools have patriotic celebrations they do that day. So I would just ask, regardless of what action we make, maybe we could have a plan so that those schools can still celebrate those patriotic celebrations they do every year.
Good suggestion. And just wanted to add too, I concur and agree with the comments that Superintendent Krieger made about looking at the other employee groups.
Krieger made about looking at the other employee groups and Board Member Magnusson, I agree too. Elementary teachers in the year or two ahead have a lot of layers coming at them, and so efforts to try to soften that. And I think one thing I didn't include in the presentation that I think is unique is that the state-required PD is made to be paced throughout the school year. It's about fifteen hours every trimester, so that came into play too as a dynamic of we can't put all the PD in the summer, or if it was possible, or in the fall or on certain days. We've got to spread it out each trimester, because that's the way the PD is designed by the state. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. We will see you next month for old business.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is our other action portion of the agenda, and I would like to welcome Chris McDonald back to the podium to talk about National Speech and Debate Education Day.
Somehow I think you rigged this, Mary, so that I would be here to entertain you at the board meeting. All right. Here we are again. Again, a thank you to our Superintendent Mary Krieger, as well as our Board President Corey Johnson and the rest of the board members for inviting us this evening to once again celebrate the accomplishments of students in our district, this time across the entire district and all of debate and speech. Tonight, we once again, we turn our attention to celebrating speech and debate activities. District one ninety-six has a long history of success in fine arts of speech and debate. In speech, we have the top two programs in Minnesota State High School League history for total medals earned at state. That would be Apple Valley and Eagan High School. In debate, we have the only program in the state to have won each of the four main debate events state titles. Yeah, that's my program. A little self-plug never hurt. All right. Each year, the National Debate and Speech Association celebrates National Speech and Debate Education Day to recognize the efforts of speech and debate educators, to highlight the pivotal role these skills play in personal advocacy, social movements, public policymaking, and recognition of our outstanding speech and debate educators and students in District one ninety-six and the tradition of excellence they have established. The administration recommends that the school board approve the following resolution. The resolution, I believe, each of you has a copy of, so I don't necessarily have to read the entire resolution. Ironically though, just as you know, today also happens to be National Pizza Day, which if you've ever been to a high school speech and debate tournament, you know it's the only food served at these events. Really, I wonder sometimes why we're not sponsored by Domino's. So we ask that the school board approve the resolution once again celebrating National Speech and Debate Education Day.
Here, this is an item under other action. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
No, moved.
Second.
Motion by Jackie and a second by Art. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members?
We just say woo-hoo and thanks a bunch. How great. Just, it's always good.
Celebrate what we do throughout the year. So, and my guess is this is probably my last time coming when you were sitting here at the day as, there, Mary, but that's great. We appreciate all of your efforts and your support over the years as our superintendent. So, and I thank the board very much.
Thank you for being here. All those in favor of approving the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? Motion carries unanimously on a five-zero vote.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, I would like to welcome our Director and Coordinator of Communications, Tony Taschner and Ally Garen to the podium to go over legislative priorities for 2024.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Krieger. I'm Ally Garen, Communications Coordinator for the district, and I'm here with Tony Taschner, the Director of Communications. And we're here tonight on behalf of the district's Legislative Advisory Council. We're here to present the recommended legislative priorities for the 2024 session and are seeking board approval of these priorities tonight. I want to start out by providing a brief background on the 2024 session of the Minnesota Legislature. The session convened earlier today, February twelfth, at the Capitol in St. Paul, and will run through May twentieth. There are two hundred and one total legislators in the Minnesota Senate and House of Representatives combined. Fourteen of them have portions of District one ninety-six in their legislative district, and three of the fourteen have previously served as school board members in various districts in Minnesota. The legislature approved a two-year budget session last session, so this is a non-budgeting session. And non-budgeting sessions focus mostly on policy. That will likely be true again this year, but funding, of course, is always a part of the discussion with any proposed legislation. Even-year sessions are also when the legislature typically approves a bonding bill to help fund capital improvement projects throughout the state. And our recommended priorities include a specific ask in this area. Lastly, for context, 2024 is an election year for all one hundred and thirty-four members of the Minnesota House of Representatives. In District one ninety-six, the process for developing our legislative priorities starts with the Legislative Advisory Council, known as the LAC. The LAC is a nonpartisan group consisting of seven citizens, a representative from each of the other eight district advisory councils, student representatives from our high schools, district staff members, and members of the school board. And a very special thanks to the Legislative Advisory Council members that are here tonight. In November, members of the LAC and Budget Advisory Council held a joint meeting where we discussed possible priorities for the upcoming session. Using input from that meeting, we developed the priorities being presented for approval And although the priorities are not yet approved, the LAC's advocacy efforts for the session have already begun. In late January, we hosted a legislative forum at Apple Valley High School, shown in the photo here on the slide. The main purpose of this annual event is to connect with legislators before the session starts and highlight the great work being done at our schools. We were incredibly proud of the Apple Valley High School students and staff who shared how they're building relationships and providing opportunities for all students to learn, grow, and be successful. It was an incredible example of the innovative thinking and commitment to kids that's prevalent in all of our schools. Earlier this month, members of the LAC also participated in the Association of Metropolitan School District's 2024 session preview. Once approved, we will share the district's priorities with staff members and the public, and will keep stakeholders informed of developments throughout the session. Then on April ninth, we have our annual District one ninety-six Day at the Capitol, where we share the district's priorities in scheduled meetings with our legislators. Another part of our advocacy work is to testify on bills being heard in committee. In recent years, we've had a number of staff testify on proposed legislation and how it would impact the district. Lastly, the LAC communicates with legislators throughout this session and stresses with them the importance of keeping us informed of possible changes in law, so we can let them know how would it impact our district or other districts in the state. So with that, I'll turn things over to Tony, who will share information about the recommended legislative priorities for the 2024 session.
Thank you, Ally. So the 2023 session of the Minnesota Legislature last year was called a historic session by many for the amount of education funding being provided, for the number of law changes included in the Omnibus Education Bill. In fact, this morning, I heard reference to the historic session last year, as they convened the twenty-fourth session. So the changes from last session have the potential to positively impact the health, wellness, and achievement of all students in our state for years to come. But there were also unfunded mandates, underfunded mandates, and unintended consequences of some of the legislation approved last session. To realize the positive potential of these new laws, our LAC proposes an overarching theme to the district's priorities this year. That is simply to support implementation of the historic changes for education that were approved last year. Implementing change in any organization or business requires ongoing support to be successful, and this is no different. So staying on that same theme, the first of our three proposed legislative priorities is to review, adjust, and support implementation of new laws. There are many more examples than the three we chose to highlight, but these are most important areas for us. As a district, we are excited about the REED Act and the outcomes it will give our learners. However, the law does not provide funding to pay for a new screener that we've purchased or the literacy curriculum that we will be purchasing. So these become unfunded mandates in our budget. And as we heard earlier on the calendar change proposal, the REED Act presents the challenge of trying to find time for forty-five hours of training for nearly two-thirds of our teachers. Our ask here is for additional funding and timeline flexibility to ensure successful implementation of a new literacy curriculum. The change in unemployment insurance law has unintended consequences. The results of having increased unemployment insurance costs and fewer employees willing to work during the summer have been predictable. But as a result, we have found ourselves planning our summer programming based on unemployment eligibility and access to employees, not what is best for students. In this area, we are asking for a change in language to broaden the definition of like positions and for the legislature to identify an ongoing funding source. The law change identified funding for three years, and it seems that amount might not make three years. Our last example of a law change from twenty-three that needs to be revised is in the area of school safety. A change to the law regarding the use of physical restraint resulted in our middle schools and high schools being without school resource officers for a few days at the start of the school year. We support a change in the law that will ensure our law enforcement agencies and officers are comfortable working in our schools. The total funding for education approved last session is more than any year before. That is true, and it is appreciated, but it cannot undo years of underfunding the general education formula or even the impact of inflation the past two years. Therefore, we propose that the district's priorities ask for an additional two percent increase to the general education formula for fiscal year 2025. That would give us a four percent increase this year and a four percent increase next year, instead of four percent this year and two percent next year. Equalization aid is a longstanding priority for our district. Equalization aid is intended to reduce funding disparities between school districts with differing levels of commercial industrial property wealth. Equalization aid does not provide additional funding for school districts. That's important to note. Does not provide additional funding for school districts. However, what it does provide is property tax relief to homeowners by reducing the amount that school districts levy locally. So equalization aid is always a part of our funding asks. And compensatory funding is intended to help schools serve students living in poverty, or poverty, I should say. Due to the Free School Meals for Kids program signed into law in 2023, families are no longer required to apply for educational benefits to receive free meals. When families do not complete the educational benefits application, our measure for poverty rates become inaccurate and would lower the amount of compensatory funding we receive if the state had not agreed to use previous poverty counts to hold the districts harmless from a loss in revenue. We agree that whole harmless language should continue until the state identifies a new, more accurate measure of poverty for determining compensatory funding in the future. Last but not least, as we have done in past years, we are asking for more local control and a reduction in mandates. Specifically, we are asking that school boards be given the authority to renew a voter-approved capital projects levy one time for up to ten years. Last year, the legislature approved similar authority for a voter-approved operating levy. This is the same ask for a different levy, one that we rely on for funding all of the technology our students and staff use each day. Our current capital projects levy was approved in 2015 with inflation for a period of ten years. It will expire at the end of 2025, meaning it will either have to be presented for another public vote, or the board could renew it at the same level if given that authority. Reducing unnecessary special education paperwork is also a frequent part of our legislative priorities. Anything we can do to reduce the amount of time away from adults, away from students, working with students, we want to reduce that so that they can work with students as much as possible. And finally, we ask for support for the District one ninety-six and City of Apple Valley partnership with six million dollars in the 2024 bonding bill. That's our request to help make needed renovations at the Apple Valley Sports Arena, which serves the South Metro region. In November, members of the House Committee on Capital Improvements visited the Apple Valley Sports Arena and saw the situation for themselves. The school district and city made a significant investment in the arena in the ice-making equipment a year ago, but the building itself has not been renovated since it opened in nineteen seventy-six. So the cost of, the total cost of the renovations would be about fifteen million dollars, I think, is the estimate, and the ask that we have for the bonding bill is six million. The city and the school district would split the other cost. So that is what our ask is specific to the bonding bill. And that's it. In summary, we've got the three areas: review, adjust, and support implementation of new laws, provide funding for inflation, equalization, and compensatory needs, and increase local control and reduce mandates. And with that, we will ask for board action on this, and would be happy to answer any questions. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Board, this is an action item tonight, so before we move into questions, is there a motion to approve?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Art and a second by Jackie. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Jackie?
Oh, I was hoping you still had the slides up. That's all right. Tony, can you talk a little bit, because I got into a conversation not too long ago where people were confused about equalization funding, because they thought equalization funding was tied into equity funding, and those are not the same animal at all.
No.
So would you talk just a little bit about equalization funding that we're looking for?
Sure. So if you think about a taxes, there's a taxes, there's a combination, your property tax bill is a combination of county taxes, your city taxes, your school district taxes, and other taxing authorities. That's your local property tax bill. And what equalization does is, well, when those property taxes or when those taxing agencies each year approve a local levy that then gets approved by the county or ultimately approved again by the board, then that gets levied against property owners. And if you have a smaller commercial industrial tax base, more of the burden falls on the homeowner. That's the bottom line. If you, you know, if you're the community that has the big manufacturing plant and the big retail center, and you get more dollars, or you don't get more dollars, I shouldn't say that, what you do is you, the homeowner benefits by having that added tax base to spread the taxes out against. So the idea of equalization should be that the homeowner is, and this is particularly important when we are going out for a levy referendum, a bond referendum, if those aren't equalized, what that means is the effort to raise a hundred dollars in our district is much different than it is to raise a hundred dollars in a district that has a lot of commercial industrial wealth. The property owners pay a much smaller amount. So what equalization does is it provides additional funding to districts like ours that are property poor in terms of commercial industrial wealth, and that equalizes the impact. It's not, it's funding for us that then gets turned over to less levy against the taxpayer.
Kind of makes it equal.
Sorry.
No, no.
I was long and winding.
No, no, it makes it equal for what we might pay and for somebody like Hopkins that has more commercial or bigger buildings, bigger commercial industrial property. It helps to make those more level. This will be available online, and people could follow along? Can they, are you doing like a weekly follow-along? Here's where they're going, here's what we're doing?
Yeah, I guess we'll kind of see where it goes and do it more on an as-needed basis, but there were, there will be times when we would like the public to know and perhaps contact legislators.
Yeah.
We've done that in the past. We, you know, we reserve that, we don't use that a lot, but when it's necessary, we absolutely do. We've got some specific asks here that are specific to us.
Right.
With a bonding bill ask, and, you know, so those are things we can, you know, we should really get our local legislators on board with that and moving forward. So, yeah, it's been a, it's been a fun process putting this together. You know, as we met, we looked at what we did last year, and we kept coming back to everything that we've had to do as a district, and you're seeing that tonight in a couple of these reports in terms of what we're having to do to implement the new laws. And we're trying to do that in a timely fashion, and at the same time, take on the extra cost after the fact. Hopefully, we can get some additional funding for the curriculum for the REED Act. Hopefully, we can get some additional funding for the curriculum for the REED Act or, um, you know. So yeah, I think it's, it only makes sense. You don't, you don't, as I told the legislators at, at our event, no organization makes big change, come in and you announce big change and then walk out of the room and say, have fun. You have to constantly review what you're doing, identify what needs to be changed, make those modifications, and, uh, and support it all the way along. So that's what I think we're trying to hold legislators accountable for, is don't walk away and think everything was perfect. It's not. Here are some things where we think we could make some improvements, while acknowledging that we think that there are great potentials for, potential for, for the legislation, the REED Act and, and other things that were approved. So we want to give them credit for what was done, but again, holding them accountable to continuing to support that going forward.
Right. And we work in partnership with them, so it's fair to, you know, they ask us to do certain things, and we ask them to help us pay for them.
Yeah, and I, and I tell people too, one of the things, education is expensive. I mean, we start the conversation there. Uh, the federal government provides, um, security mostly, states provide education. And so it's always been the case, uh, it's a matter of how much and how it's used. And, uh, in my years here, you know, I can confidently get up there and talk about how I think this district is operated and how we've used our funds and how we've talked with our voters about how we do that. We've had to go out and ask our voters for, for dollars over the years. Um, so you need to be telling the story of what's happening, and having the Legislative Advisory Council really has helped us do that.
Really has.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Sachin, yes?
Answered my second question, my, my, one of my questions, which is around, how has the feedback and input been from our legislators, especially as to the, you know, the burden that districts have to face with the implementation of the REED Act as well as the employment insurance? I think you had answered that.
Yeah, it's, it's been right on target, I would say, because we went to the AMSD event and, and we heard them talk about that exact same thing of supporting, looking at, making changes to what we need to make changes to. So, yeah, I think we ended up in a very good spot.
So thank you, Tony. Uh, again, thank you for, to you and Allison, uh, for your leadership in this process. This has been amazing. Uh, and just, you know, on behalf of the board, and I'll definitely speak for myself here as well, that we're all deeply grateful to the entire Legislative Advisory Council. There's a lot of work that happens for this volunteer group of representative stakeholders to put in to get us to this point, and, uh, that work is acknowledged, uh, and, and really a lot of thank you for that work.
I appreciate it. It is, it is rewarding. We've got, I don't know if our students are here tonight. We have outstanding student members, uh, on the, on the council and, and just really people who care and are willing to sit down together. You know, when we started this 12 years ago, I didn't know what, what it would be like, you know? Could we run this thing in a nonpartisan way where we didn't have issues? And I tell you, you know, there really have not been those kinds of issues throughout. It's been more about what's right, and what do we need for the district? And so, and again, being able to tell our story so that as we've had to move forward with different initiatives, that we've had people that have been with us along the way, and they've been telling our legislators that story as well. So, and, and, you know, a credit to the superintendents, uh, Barron's and, and Mary, uh, and, and the work that they've done in just building the credibility of this district. We're the third largest district in the state. And, um, and we do have that, the attention of legislators when we're down there. I think we, they respect what this district does, and, uh, and we have their ear. So we, we certainly want to take advantage of that.
Thank you.
Anna?
He'll pull it up.
Keep talking.
Hello?
There you go.
Oh, thanks. Sorry. Um, so can you just give a little background quickly on if, uh, community members want to get involved with the Legislative Advisory Committee? What they can do or where they can go get information or that process? Just a little bit, just a quick one.
Yeah, you know, I would say contacting the Communications Department, contacting me or Ally. Um, that is how members have gotten involved before. Somebody reached out and said, hey, I saw that there's a Legislative Advisory Council. I'm interested. One of the things, um, that we really, that I, that I wish we were further along was having a network, um, where we can reach out, you know, in a, in a, you know, in a immediate way and, and contact a, a lot of our stakeholders. We're not there yet. We have vehicles for doing that, but I'm, I'm wanting a vehicle that's specific to legislative efforts because I think we are, you know, it's a, it's a year-round process now. It's not just during session. We're doing things all, a lot, a lot of things when they're out of session as well. So, um, I think that's something that's, that's an area where we can continue to improve. But yeah, if anybody's interested, please contact either one of us, and we will, um, we'll get you involved.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you again for the amazing work. This is very important work you do every year, but even more so this year because we know there's going to be a lot of movement and legislative changes at the Capitol. So like to see us that, getting in front of it, figuring out what our needs are so that we can kind of keep in touch and with those local legislators. So this is, this is awesome to see.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, we have a motion to approve by Art, seconded by Jackie. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously on a 5-0 vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, under Other Action, I would like to welcome, uh, Michael Bolsoni and NAIPAC Chairperson Nicole Lontree-Brovold to the podium to go over our Native American Parent Advisory Committee Resolution of Concurrents.
Okay. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, School Board members, and Superintendent Krieger. My name is Michael Bolsoni. I'm the Director of Secondary Education. And in this role, I have the honor of supporting our district's American Indian Education Program. And joining me this evening and also speaking will be our Chairperson Nicole Lontree-Brovold. And we also have several members of our Native American Parent Advisory Committee with us tonight, Austin Corbine, Mark Lontree, Sienna Moba, and Katie Colson. Thank you and welcome. Uh, we are here tonight to provide an overview and update on the program and will present the Resolution of Concurrents. We will ask for your approval of this resolution at the end of the presentation. And I'll begin with an overview and update of the District Indian Ed Program, and we'll start with a Dakota land acknowledgement. We want to acknowledge that District 196 resides within the Minnesota Makachee, a Dakota place that is, and that this land has been the homeland of the Dakota people and the Oshere, I actually have a pronunciation here. Hold on a second. Oshere Shakawin, Seven Council Fire, for every generation since their creation of Badothe. Minnesota Makachee, the land where the waters reflect the skies, is Dakota land. Minnesota is also the home of the Anishinaabe and many other indigenous peoples who have and do contribute to the overall foundation of this region. We encourage all members of the District 196 community to join us in learning more about the people, contributions, sovereignty, and treaty rights of the Dakota and Anishinaabe people. District 196 will continue to strengthen our relationship with Minnesota's 11 sovereign nations and indigenous communities, families, and students. And this Dakota land acknowledgement was written in collaboration with our Native American Parent Advisory Committee. We have a lot of staff. Um, they were not able to make it tonight, but I just wanted to put them up there and certainly, um, give them credit for all the work they do. And you're going to hear about a lot of the, uh, the different programs and energy and, um, opportunities we provide for a lot of students, and these are the folks that are responsible for that. We have a lot of schools, of course, and administrators and staff who contribute in so many ways as well. Um, new this year, we added Ciara Knutson, and she just recently joined us. Um, and also new this year is our location. We're now in the Silver Bell Learning Center in Eagan, and it's been just a great classroom for us. Um, it's provided storage, um, opportunities to use the gym, outdoor space, kitchen, cafeteria, um, and it's been a great move, um, that we made recently. So an overview, uh, just a brief history with some funding sources. The District, um, American Indian Education Program is a supplemental program. It doesn't supplant, but it adds to what we do. Uh, it comes out of the Indian Education Act of 1972, um, which gave sovereign nations more autonomy and influence in the educational programming that districts provide and provided, and provide, still provides funding, um, for those uses. We serve students pre-K all the way to 22 years old, and our goal of the program is to meet the unique academic and cultural needs of indigenous learners who attend District 196 schools. We receive funding from a lot of different sources, uh, federal and state grants. Uh, we've used ESER funding. You can see here, uh, special ed, equity, elementary, secondary, um, and other community organizations also provide funding that helps support this program. Our goals, as you can see, uh, for the, um, connect to the Minnesota Department of Indian Education, and they also connect to federal title funding as well. Uh, we have goals in areas of post-secondary preparation, academic achievement. Uh, we want to make sure our curriculum is relevant to all of our students, native and non-native. Uh, we want to reinforce positive self-images of our students and, and also promote intercultural awareness. Um, on the federal side, uh, that grant helps us to strengthen cultural identity, enhance problem-solving and cognitive skills development, increase academic achievement, and also increase parent participation. Each year, uh, part of our job is to make sure we're listening to our parents and our community, and we provide a survey in which we ask questions, we review, we rewrite and edit the survey each year. Um, and we wanted to share, uh, one of the questions with you tonight, which is, we ask for current or additional ways that the program could support students and community needs. And you can see the top results from last school year, 2023, and then from this school year, 2324. I'll point out that differences, uh, surfacing in 2024 were opportunities about courses that students can receive in school and also culturally relevant curriculum. And we're seeing similar themes in our state legislature, um, with different legislation, um, and a lot of interest by teachers, uh, and educators, um, in professional development as well. Uh, we do a lot of different programming. Uh, here are some highlights from some of our summer programs. This, uh, you can see spans the gamut from, um, sewing classes to field trips, um, outdoor activities. These are photos of, um, trips to the Minnesota Landscape Arboretum, uh, the Malax Cultural Museum, the, um, Dakota County Parks, uh, and we had several staff in the summer who helped us as well. Um, academic programming as well. Uh, we do literacy nights, uh, academic math evenings to support families, um, as well as study sessions and other opportunities for students to get academic support. And I'll share those with you, um, here in just a minute. So as you can see, we try to make sure that we have academic support for every level, um, all the way, uh, into EFCE and pre-K, kindergarten readiness. Um, elementary, we have a summer cahoots program, literacy nights, children's book clubs, um, storytelling night, winter gatherings. Um, middle school, we do progress monitoring with students in school. We provide social, emotional, academic support. Um, we added this year a study group for our middle school students to come together and get, um, homework help support. And then for high school, we do a lot of academic coaching, college career readiness. Uh, we also do progress monitoring, um, college visits, cultural enrichment. Um, and then there's also several groups that meet as well, uh, within schools and sometimes even across schools. Families are involved as well. It's not just students during school. Uh, we run a lot of programs on weekends, uh, evenings, uh, and in the summer. And this is, these are just a few really of what we do. So, uh, we do a school supply distribution, a math family night. Uh, Indigenous Peoples' Day event is also, is always one of our most crowded packed events. Um, over 100 participants this year. Our winter gathering is also, uh, 150 participants. I think it was our biggest effort this year. Um, a lot of great things happening, crafts, um, family portraits, bingo, uh, a lot of books being distributed, uh, games being played. Uh, we just recently had a family literacy and storytelling night with a, uh, an author from North Dakota. And upcoming nights, if, if the weather holds, maybe a family tubing night. We have a round dance, uh, STEM night. We do a great graduation honoring ceremony that you're all invited to, of course, in the South of the River Powwow that we collaborate with several districts south of the river, um, to provide that opportunity. This is what our college and career readiness programming looks like. Um, we do several campus visits with our students. You can see the schools that we visited this year. Uh, we do ACT prep classes as well that are culturally specific to our students, along with academic coaching, as I mentioned earlier, middle school study circle. We've got some upcoming days that our students will be, um, participating in in April and May. Uh, and then there's some career exploration days as well, like the Indian Youth Stethoscopes Youth Summit and the Native American Family STEM Celebration, in which students can explore, uh, careers in medicine, uh, and other STEM fields. We do collaboration with Dakota County Parks, getting students outside, trying different activities, uh, inviting families as well. And then a lot of different cultural enrichment programming that includes, um, arts, traditional arts, music, dance, uh, food, and family events. We do a lot of cultural programming, and sometimes people wonder how we do it all, but I just wanted to put the numbers up because it really is a lot, and I want to give credit to, uh, NAIPAC for coming up with a lot of different ideas and support for us, um, bringing families, you know, into this, uh, but also our staff, of course, who comes up, organizes and, and shows up and helps work this event. So you can see, um, 2017, 18, we had 12 events. We kind of moved it up to 25. Last year, we did 47 events, um, and we're at 43 as of today. Um, and we still have a lot going. You can see, even during COVID, we had events, and we, we did them differently. We, uh, we had to, uh, kind of organize them differently, but families still showed up. Uh, we did some online events as well, uh, but we didn't stop, and we were really impressed by how much families wanted to stay in community, um, with each other and with our staff, and that was very affirming. Here are some of what the cultural enrichment activities look like: drum and dance classes, indigenous authored book clubs, language clubs, where students are learning both, um, Dakota and Ojibwe language skills, um, summer programming, the ECFE family series of six sessions to help students get ready for kindergarten, uh, game nights, family nights, um, and arts. And you can see some photos of students and families enjoying these activities. We also have American Indian, uh, education learning trunks. Um, these are both Ojibwe and Dakota learning trunks. They are, um, packed with materials, uh, lessons, and artifacts that teachers use. These are checked out all the time. We had two. I think we now have four. We actually, the casters on some broke. We were going to order new trunks. We decided to replace them. We said, let's just order two new ones. We'll use the broken one still and add. Uh, we just recently applied for a series of grants to buy more trunks. Our hope and goal eventually is to have trunks live at each of our schools. Um, they provide support to lessons and students from second to 12th grade, and there are specific lessons that each of, uh, these trunks help support. And all of our activities, I should have mentioned this, our field trips, um, academic activities are aligned with our American Indian Education Program goals. They're aligned with grade level standards, and they're aligned with the Ojibwe-Dakota state standards as well. So we make sure that, that the time being used, um, is really aligned to the learning that we, that we want students and families to achieve, um, when they're with us. We've got some books here. You can see that we use for the book clubs, um, that are very popular. And, uh, upcoming, a great event, if you're interested in learning more or being part of this community, is our South of the River Powwow. It's at Burnsville High School on Saturday, May 4th. Um, and this is, uh, several, several high schools and Indian Ed programs combined together to put on this event. Um, and this year, um, the artwork that's going to be used to promote the event and the posters, the flyers, the mailings, uh, was done by our own artist Amelia from East Lake Elementary. She entered a contest. She won. Her artwork is displayed, um, on the screen. And so if you do attend or if you see any of the promotional materials, it's her artwork that will be displayed. Um, so with that, I want to thank you for listening to the overview and update. A lot going on. I could go into much more depth, but wanted to certainly provide you with an overview of, uh, the type of programming, the scope, and then some of the sequencing. I'm going to introduce Nicole Lontree-Brovold to, uh, come up to the podium at this point and talk more about NAIPAC and the process of the vote for concurrents.
Good evening. Um, we're excited to be here this evening to share once again our vote of concurrents for this past school year. Um, so the NAIPAC board did vote that our district is in, um, concurrents. So we are excited to continue the work that we have started and hopefully continue to build on all of these wonderful events and, um, offerings that we have for our students. And I also have our committee, and I'm going to make them introduce themselves because they always make me talk. So Katie's going to start.
I'm not shy. It's fine. Uh, I'm Katie Colson. I'm the teacher representative on NAIPAC, and I teach fourth grade at Thomas Lake Elementary.
Hi, I'm Sienna Moba. I'm the secretary for NAIPAC, and I have a graduate from, at, Apple Valley High School and a current Southview. I'm sorry, I keep saying she's at Southview. She's in seventh grade. At Valley Middle.
Hi, I'm, I'm Austin Corbine. I have my daughter, Akili. She's a senior at Eagan High School this year. So this is officially, I think, my last, my last meeting for, as far as with you guys. But one thing I want to say is thank you all these years for us, and we'll get more and more, but- and more, but thank you for your support and the hard work that they all have done throughout all these years, so I appreciate it, and other than that, thank you.
I'm Mark Lontree, I'm the MD-at-Large Representative for NAIPAC, and I have a 7th grader in the district.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, and then a little bit about me. I'm a District 196 graduate, and then I also have three kids in the district. I have an 8th grader, a 3rd grader, and a kindergartner. Okay, so the Resolution of Concurrents is our annual compliance, and it's reviewed by the survey that Michael had talked about earlier. We survey our parents every year to see how they're feeling, our program is doing, but also our district. We look at our student achievement data, the district efforts to increase indigenous language learning opportunities, and the updates we receive from the Teaching and Learning Department. We discussed how the district is meeting the needs of our American Indian students, the progress on our NAIPAC recommendations, and our future goals and recommendations. So, like I said earlier, we voted that we were concurrent this year. And then, as always, we have recommendations for the district, and a lot of them are continuing from the recommendations we've had the last couple of years, just because it's a lot of work, and we know that it's not going to just happen overnight. So, some of the areas that we would like to focus on are to continue to strengthen the efforts of 196 American Indian curriculum across all subject areas. Knowing with the new implementation of the standards, the legislation that has passed, we know that there's a greater need to provide annual professional development for all teachers. I know that our teachers are familiar with the Understand Native Minnesota Educator Academy. We want something like that for our District 196 educators, and it would be something that could be offered during the summer, or even required PD during the school year. We also see the need to improve our native authored books being available in our classrooms and libraries throughout the district. Like Michael said earlier about the learning trunks, we have three with our Indian Ed program, and they're checked out all the time. They're used in multiple schools, and teachers fight over them. And so, we want our schools to each have their own trunks. So, we've been working to see if we can make that happen. That is something that we really want to be followed through this year, with the intent of each elementary and middle school having their own trunks next year. We also want to continue to work on the progress we made from last year's recommendations regarding offering Ojibwe language classes. This has been a labor of love. It's been a lot of work, and we also want it not only at the high school level, but possibly at middle school, and then we have been doing Ojibwe language clubs with our elementary students. We would like to see that continue, and then also to offer Dakota language as well. And then the last one is to continue providing academic coaching at our middle school level. Middle school is not an easy time for our students, and so we want to try to provide them culturally relevant strategies to help improve academic performance, and we would also like to see our summer programming continue and provide them with more leadership opportunities. Is that it?
All right, that officially concludes our presentation. I want to thank all of our parents who are here tonight. It's hard for me to even explain how much work and energy they put into this program. We meet monthly, I think it's an hour and a half meeting, it's usually like two and a half hours, in addition to all of the events. So, these are very committed parents and community members, and we really appreciate them. So, with that, we can take any questions or comments you may have.
Excellent. This is an action item tonight, so before we go into questions, is there a motion to accept the Resolution of Concurrents as presented?
Move or approve?
Second.
A motion by Art, second by Suchan. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions from board members? Art?
Not a question really, but just, you know, echoing what Austin said earlier about how much this program has meant to my family, you know, coming up and through the district, you know, having two graduates of the district who participated for, you know, for the past 24 years, and, you know, my daughter now continuing as a member of the committee. You know, this, this program's amazing in that it is almost entirely student and family-driven. You know, the NAIPAC does such a great job going out every year, several times a year, asking folks, what do you want to see in the program, what do you want us to do, what should we offer, and then making it happen. And you saw from the number of programs that are offered each year to the families, almost one a week. It's amazing what can happen, and the program is different every year. It's what the families want and need that year, and we're very, I think Nicole said, or maybe it was Austin, talking about the programming during the pandemic. I mean, just making sure that our community stayed connected at a time that was really difficult for everybody's family, but our families in particular. So, I just want to say, you know, thanks to everything that NAIPAC does. It's an amazing resource in this district, and I think our families know that. You know, it's, it really is something that I've valued and treasured in my time here in the community, so thanks to all of you.
Excellent. Thank you, Art.
Anna?
I just had a quick question regarding the trunks. What would you need to happen in order to have trunks at every school? Like, what's the challenge getting it? Money?
Yeah, money. Each trunk is approximately $2,000, but it's also a matter of ordering and managing the materials as well. So, we actually applied for several $2,000 individual grants that the State of Minnesota was offering just a few weeks ago. We're going to see how many of those we received, and then we'll try to fill the balance with what's left.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Suchan?
Yeah, thank you, Cory. So, again, thank you so much. I mean, you know, this is a, just an amazing program that you folks have been running. I've been seeing this evolution for, I don't know, seven-plus years, and it's just the commitment, but the sincerity of that commitment of each of you as well. I mean, our students, our native students are the beneficiaries of it, and this is truly a fabulous example of, you know, laying that right foundation that perhaps, you know, we didn't have to the next generation and generation after that. So, just thank you to each of you, and just, a lot of love for what you do, and a respect for what you have accomplished thus far. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie?
I'll just repeat what Art and Suchan said. This always makes my heart full to watch what you've done, and it always, because it changes every year, as Art said. You survey your parents, and you do what your parents want, and I know that I've listened to you telling the state at the concurrents of what, what we've done and what our, what our district has done, and they ask really hard questions, and sometimes they're not smiling at us when they're asking those questions. And I'm always amazed at the level of calm, the level of competency, that you can answer those questions, and how the state goes. I think I've heard it before when we're leaving, that, or maybe just, it was just, that they are so proud of this district, that you, the pride that you show, the, in things that you offer, that you're contacting your parents, and that the state comes back up with that all the time. What do your parents say? What do your parents say? And you listen to that, and I'm, it's, like I said, it just makes my heart full, sitting here, listening to what has been done, and I know, let's see if I'm trying to think what year my son graduated from high school, was, well, it was too long ago to count, but you were just starting then, and I remember he had some friends, and he said, well, can't we go to that stuff too? I'm like, because, like, so, I mean, just from over the years, it's just amazing. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I just also had to say, I, I have had the pleasure of seeing the program grow, but also seen it with my own family, the impact that this program has. So, I just wanted to say thank you. I have, one of my sons, he's a 5th grader, and one of his best friends is Native American, and when I talk to the parents, I'm always like, hey, what do you think about our, you know, NAIPAC and our Native American education? And the parents are always like, it's amazing. Oh, my gosh, so good. We're always asking for feedback, we can always give back. And then, my son comes home after playdates with his friends and tells me everything he learned just talking with his friends about Native American culture and about their heritage, and he's just excited to learn. So, I've just been really impressed, not only with the programming, but the ripple effects it has in the community. It's just, just really awesome to see, so thank you.
And just one more thing. I think the other thing that is, that it's not just for your students, the work that you have done to embed this into our curriculum. So, we've got 2nd grade modules now, and 5th, 4th grade, well, of course, Katie, how come you were so slow on that? 4th grade, and those are for all students, and it's amazing. So, I mean, it, it, it makes my heart full. Congratulations, thank you.
All right. There is a motion to accept the resolution by Art, seconded by Suchan. All those in favor of accepting the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously on a five-zero vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us almost to the end of our agenda tonight. Are there any school board members with items they would like to share? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Krieger for superintendent updates.
Okay, I just have one announcement, but it's a big one. So, I am very happy to report that the negotiating teams for District 196 and Dakota County United Educators reached a tentative agreement last Tuesday night on a new two-year contract. DQ will share information about that tentative agreement with members February 15 through the 21st, and there will be a vote February 22nd. There are no details of the tentative agreement that we can share at this time, but I do want to assure our community that all people at that negotiating table worked really, really hard and came to what I, I think is a good solution, and I'm happy that we have reached that tentative agreement. So, heartfelt gratitude to everyone, thank you.
Excellent. That brings us to the end of our, oh, we can give some applause for that, yeah. We can. That brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
And if there's no second, we can stay here. Second by, motion by Suchan, second by Jackie. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Our next regular school reading is Monday, March 11th.